Welcome to the April 21 meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome. And just a reminder to silence your cell phones if you would please. And there's meeting documents next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert here in the front row will be able to help with that. We'll go to the routine business. Consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion and a second to approve. Any questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Looking for a motion to approve the county commission minutes as of April 14.
Make that motion.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any changes or corrections? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes. Bills to be paid, $707,152.18.
Pay the bills.
With a second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Anybody have any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Barth.
Today's bills include about $370,000 for armor correctional health services. It's a significant number.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the bills as listed. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes. We have two reports on file. One is the Public Funds Investment Trust annual report. And then we have a registered deeds official statement of revenue collected for the month of March. And those are also in the file. We'll go to routine action. We'll consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine personnel action. Any comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. We have a large number of abatements today. We'd like to take the first two separately, A and B. And if it's okay with you, Kyle, we'll take the other ones from C through N as one lump. Is that right with you, Pam?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Halseth, Director of Equalization. We bring forward this morning two requests for abatements. The first being from the city of Sioux Falls, record ID 85513, in the amount of $232.36. This is for a property they purchased in 2014.
Thank you, Kyle. Do you want to have any questions on item A for Kyle? If not, I look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve RDID 85513 for $232.36. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Item B?
Item B is from Frisbees Incorporated, record ID 35055, for 2014 property taxes payable. They're requesting an abatement of $12,057.69 for an overvaluation.
Anyone have any questions about item B?
I don't have it on my...
Kyle, it looks like from the documentation that we received that the error was a result was when two properties were combined or something?
Yes. One of the quirks within the city of Sioux Falls is for you to put up a larger sign on your property. And if you own two pieces of property, they mandate that the properties be combined in one tax bill, so you can put up a larger sign. We don't argue with them, we just do it. And in this case, there was an airmaid. So Frisbees is requesting the difference.
Good question. Any other comments, questions for Kyle? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item B, record RDID for $12,057.69. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Again, if we can take all the elderly freezes as one group.
So should you just want me to ask you to approve C through N? Or do you want me to read the numbers? Or...
I think we have to...
Well, I didn't know how you meant in one lump.
We'll have one vote.
Only... Oh, oh, okay. Gotcha.
Sorry.
Sorry. I was confused. All right. We have record ID 11217 for $749.68. Record ID 26760 for $595.32. Record ID 27432 for $517.06. Record ID 37997 for $1,236.3. Record ID 39745 for $401.38. Record ID 41126 for $1,198.44. Record ID 41679 for $139.45. Then record ID 42634 for $1,078.50. Record ID 42759 for $1,437.64. Record ID 46092 for $1,477.34. And record ID 5119 for $815.36. Record ID 61599 for $413.75.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on any of those? Remove for approval. We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second for item C through N. And they're all elderly property tax freezes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Ms. Nelson.
Absolutely.
Pam, just during our equalization hearings, we did suggest to one couple that they go down and see you. Did they come down and see you?
It would be hard to tell.
It would have been last Friday about getting on the elderly freeze.
They were probably there. If they did, they didn't mention that you sent... A lot of people say that they talked to equalization, they send them down, so I wouldn't know. But they're a little late to apply for this year. Since you pay your taxes in your year in arrears, people are now applying for their next year's property tax relief. So they can't do that because abatements have to be for a specific amount. They'll have to wait until January of next year to ask for the abatement on those taxes. And then they can also apply on time for the next year's taxes.
Good to know. Thank you.
Good question. Item number seven is notices and requests. We have a notice from the South Dakota State Historical Society to consider nomination of Terrace Park and Japanese Gardens here in the Minnehaw County on the National Register of Historic Places. Anyone have any comments about that? I don't think we need to do anything official. No planning and zoning notices. We're on item nine, petition for compromise. Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an applicant who... There are a couple liens involved. One is DPNO 58778. The other is DPNO 80820. The first one is in the name of both parties in the marriage totaling $3,150.21. And the second one, 80820, is for $420. And there is no issue on the second one. The applicant recognizes that that's her responsibility. However, apparently some of these bills were absolutely towards the ex-husband. And during the time before the divorce, there was some support given to her now ex-husband, which she doesn't want to be accountable for. And at the same time, the law states that she does still have that responsibility. I guess, Kirsten, can you make a comment on that?
On the timing of the lien attachment?
Yes. And the fact that they were still married and one party was not aware doesn't mean that...
Yeah. Under the laws of our state generally, there's what's called a duty to support your spouse. And until a divorce decree is finalized generally, unless the expenses are of an extraordinary nature and outside of what was to be expected during the course of the marriage, that a lien attached even during a separation period before a final decree remains enforceable against the other spouse. Of course, you have broad discretion in considering a compromise request anyway, whether enforceable or not. But that's generally how the law operates in that area.
Thank you.
So there are a couple of possibilities here. We can remove the applicant's name from the larger portion, which includes both during the marriage and after the marriage. And we can also leave that towards the ex-spouse. Or we can compromise completely. Or we can make the spouse still responsible for that other full amount. And I guess there are a couple of ways we could go at it here. We could compromise and release the lien in full against the applicant for a payment of $725, leaving the balance only in the name of the applicant's ex-husband. We could take a partial payment towards the joint part, say, of an amount something like $475, leaving the residual against the ex-husband. Or we could release it in full. I guess I'm somewhat flexible. I think that clearly we need to really take it off of her as far as the part that the ex-husband created. And so I guess maybe I would float a motion that we would release the lien in full upon payment of $475, leaving the balance of $2675.21 only in the name of the ex-husband.
Everyone, excuse me. Everyone understand Jeff's motion? And is there a second for that? Is there a second?
Well, dies for a lack of a second.
Dies for a lack of a second.
Commissioner Benning, go.
Yes.
Could I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Point of clarification. So, I mean, this is pretty complicated when you try to sort through all these different things. But my understanding is that the liens that were imposed for DPNO 58778, which I believe is the only lien in question here, that there were three liens imposed that occurred during the marriage. One on July 20th in the amount of $500, one on January 18th in the amount of $450, and one on July 15th in the amount of $500. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So I guess maybe I didn't hear one of... It seems to me that one option would be to leave those amounts on the petitioner and remove all the remaining amounts to the ex-husband alone. So those amounts would stay on the petitioner and the ex-husband? And any excess would be on just the ex-husband?
Well, there were some payments made. And I'm just reviewing here. But the bottom line is that she's accepting responsibility for the lien 80820, which is $420. And she's questioning the full amount there on 58778 for $31.50. So if you take a look at the other liens, and they've had some over the years, I think those are taken care of, right? There's just the two that are remaining. So there's just two liens at this point.
And which two would those be?
5778 and 80820.
Okay.
And 58778 is the only one we're really battling over right now. And $950 of that was to the ex-husband without the knowledge of the then-still spouse. Am I confusing it? Am I confusing me?
What was the date of the divorce?
The final decree was January 12th of 2010, I believe.
Commissioners, one of the things that you've done in the past on something like this, where you clearly identified the liens that are applicable to both parties during the time of a marriage, you've split those in half and said each person is responsible for half of that. So in this case, if you go with that premise, we've identified three liens totaling $1,450.50 that are clearly within the timeframe of the marriage. There's some dispute on who knew what and when. And our records indicate that that is a little fuzzy. But clearly, these were during the times of the marriage. So perhaps an option you may want to consider is releasing her name from this account for a payment of $725, which is half of the three liens in dispute. And then the balance of the liens remain against the ex-husband. That's an option you could consider.
Ken, those other DPNOs aren't listed here, though.
I'm not sure what you're saying on DPNOs. We're only dealing with one, 58778.
Okay.
And they're the first three lien recordings. One for $500, the next one for $450, and the other one for $500. Those all were within the timeframe of the marriage, all subsequent requests for assistance. The 5821, the $500, the $300, the $400, and the $452 were clearly made for just him.
Right.
After the divorce.
As a point of clarification, so that motion would be that that amount be forgiven if it's paid right now? Or it's just split off and the lien remains in her name alone in the amount of $725?
If the payment is in fact made, the $725, then her name would be removed from the lien account. If she doesn't make payment and you don't satisfy the terms of what you consider within one year, then it stays exactly like it is.
And she still would have the other lien of $950?
She still has the one that she needs to take care of. Correct. The $420.
I'll make that motion on second.
We have a motion, and I may ask you to repeat it. Gene?
Excuse me?
Well, who's going to do it?
Is there a second?
Did you make a motion?
Yes, he did.
I'll second it.
Would you...
Let's clarify the motion. To release, on payment of $725, she will be, have her name removed from 58778?
That's your entire motion?
That's the motion.
Yeah. Okay. Kirsten?
And can I get clarification on how much of the amount remains then?
The remaining amount should stay against the ex-spouse.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Her name is only removed on that particular DPNO. But I need a second.
We do need a second.
Second.
Jeff seconded. I think we need more discussion to clarify the motion.
Okay. As I understand it, on the 8, on 778 that did the first DPNO, there's a $3150 balance. And upon her payment of $725, which is one-half of the liens incurred prior to the divorce, on payment of that, her name will be released from that lien, and his will remain on it. And the balance will be, oh, hell, $731.5021 less $725. Okay. That's my motion.
A motion and a second. Does everyone understand that? If the applicant is here, she can make comments about that. She does not need to come to the podium or identify herself. Is the applicant here? Okay? Good. We have a motion and a second. And the motion is, thankfully, it's well-written by someone else. To compromise and release the lien in full against the applicant upon payment of $725, leaving the balance of the lien in the amount of $2,425.21 only in the name of the applicant's ex-husband.
This is 58778.
Yeah. If payment is not made within one year from approval, this agreement is null and void. You're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Do we need to take action on that other lien?
I believe that just remains.
80820? I would move no action on that.
I don't think there was an application on that.
Oh, there was not?
Now we're to the opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here who would like to make comments about something that is not on the agenda, we would like you to come forward now, please. No movement, so we'll go to the regular business. The first item on the regular business is to review and consider applications for Minnehaw County surface ambulance license for dispatch service area number five submitted by MedStar and Paramedic Plus. Mr. McFarland?
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, Minnehaw County received notice that Rural Metro Ambulance Services would not be providing ambulance services to our dispatch area number five effective May 21, 2015. Back in February, in fact, February 17, 2015, you authorized the distribution of applications for two firms who were interested in serving and obtaining that license for Zone 5 for the period beginning May 21, 2015 through December 31, 2016. And those applications were to be delivered to us, not later than March 13. We did receive two applications. One from MedStar from Brandon, and the other one from Paramedics Plus, who, as you know, is the service that will replace Rural Metro on May 21 in the city of Sioux Falls. And as you know, we've attached copies of both applications in your material for your review. As part of the process, Dr. Jeff Luther did go ahead and complete... He's the Quality Assurance Director for our ordinance. And he completed his review of both applications. And he concluded that both services do meet the requirements for licensure under our county ordinance. And we've also provided a copy of the email letter from Dr. Luther stating his conclusions, as well as a copy of the ordinance for your review. The area, just to remind everybody, that is under consideration is Zone 5. This is a map of our current primary service areas in the county. Area number one is presently served by the city of Del Rapids. Area number two is by Garrettson Ambulance Service. Number three is Humboldt Fire and Rescue. Number five is the area currently served by Rural Metro. And this is, this green area is the licensed area under consideration. Area six is serviced by MedStar out of Brandon. And then number four up here is from Jasper. For your information as well, some of you had asked for the call volume numbers, and we've provided you with those. Just quickly recap that for you. In 2015, to date, this particular area, and it would be where it says Rural Metro right there, so far, we've had 130 service calls in that area. For 2015 to date, in 2014, that number was 628 calls for services. And you can see how each of the calls for services line up for each of the rural ambulance services for those years. And we've provided you that data to show you all the way back to at least 2010. So both services are here today, and that to answer any questions that you may have about their applications, and to give you any other information that they think is necessary in order to help you evaluate the decision. Like I indicated, Dr. Luther, and if you, he had asked me just to go ahead and make sure that I made his comments aware or known to you. And I'll just read his letter that we received on April 13. It says, "Dear Commissioners, I have reviewed two ambulance applications for primary service area number five. The applications were complete. I reviewed the applications, paying attention to particular items such as personnel, quality directors, medical directors, and equipment, including ambulances. As you know, Paramedics Plus has recently acquired a contract to cover the city of Sioux Falls, and MedStar currently operates out of Brandon. After reviewing the applications, both are equal in all respects, in my opinion. Having said that, I would not have any recommendations as to one service over the other, as both are highly qualified and will provide excellent service for the area applied." So Dr. Luther has, is not making a specific recommendation at this time for these applications.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone have comments? Questions?
Can you clarify for me? Are we required to pick one? Or are we, do we have the flexibility to allow both to provide service in this area?
And that, I believe that the way our ordinance is structured is that it is for, it doesn't refer to multiple licenses. I mean, we've never had that issue come up before. But I do believe our ordinance is designed for it's a service provider within that area.
Any other questions for Ken at this point?
One question, Mr. Chairman. Ken, when the city annexes land in the rural area, does that automatically then become part of the city as far as ambulance coverage?
At this juncture, these zones are set by our ordinance, as per ordinance. So any adjustments in these zones, we would have to do, I believe, with an ordinance adjustment. And we have not done that since we've changed these zones.
Thank you.
The other, you know, the other point of information I would leave you, because this had come up during the application process. There was some discussion about, is this a good time to change the boundaries of the zones? And perhaps, you know, either expand or contract the other service areas. We made it clear at the beginning of the process that this was to cover the existing licensing period that we had begun on, you know, January 1 of this year through December of 2016. And that the decision would be to continue the current boundaries and the zones for this completion of this licensing period. And if there was a desire to do something different, we would do that in 2017 and 2018 for that licensing period. So like I said, we do have both ambulance services here that are here to answer any questions or to provide you with additional information. And we do have Paramedics Plus come up, and if you have any comments you'd like to make.
Thank you, Ken. Because we have two written applications, obviously, and we've had a chance to review those, we'd ask that the presenters come up and make a few comments, but try to keep it brief. We won't put a time limit on it unless it goes way too long. But we would be happy to hear from both of you, and that will take into consideration. And we'll start with Paramedics Plus.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Mike Burrow. I'm with Paramedics Plus.
Would you spell your last name, Mike?
Certainly. B is in boy, U R E A U.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we put forward our proposal for Zone 5. At this time, we'll be taking over the city contract on the 21st after the RFP bid. I believe we've gone fairly in-depth on our plan on how we expect to go ahead and meet the needs in Zone 5. We'd like to assist any way we can, but I will really open us up to questions rather than get in the weeds on this.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mike? Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I'm curious. You're not going to have stations as such, or the ambulances are going to be moved around? Is that correct?
Correct, sir.
Can you explain that to us a little bit, and how close you are to that whole west end?
Oh, certainly. So at this time, we went forward to put forward our post plan. That pulls out actual CAD data to decide where frequency of calls are in the city. That's analyzed on a 20-week standard. So any calls that are pulled directly from the actual dispatch CAD allows us to move those locations. So if we see in the very beginning, there's a trend necessary for a movement to be able to meet those needs in any portion of Zone 5, we can either go ahead and move a post out that location to make that adjustment. But we will naturally see the needs... to meet those needs in any portion of Zone Five, we can either go ahead and move a post out that location to make that adjustment. But we will naturally see the needs in that individual zone based upon that frequency of calls. So, human populations generally move to certain areas during times of the day. Because of that, you can kind of predict roughly where calls will generate. It's pretty standard in the industry.
And do you just sit in the parking lot with the ambulance running and?
Sometimes.
Sometimes?
Yes.
What else?
Other times, they, other times they go into local area businesses to eat. Sometimes, sometimes your availability of stations, if you get out in an area where that becomes necessary, but we don't plan on that this time. But that is possible if necessary.
Other questions for Commissioner Barth?
Mike, I talked to you about this on the phone, but your plan is that if there's a BLS transport coming in and it needs ALS, Advanced Life Support System, intercept, that you would then transfer the patient from the other ambulance into your ambulance, right?
At this time, that's still open for discussion. In three days, I'll be meeting with the majority of the providers in the area, and we'll be discussing that through. That's what I would like to see, but that's not written in stone. This is one of those items where it requires compromise.
And you did point out to me that that's the same kind of thing you would do with a helicopter coming to intercept that same patient. It would be.
As well, yes.
Transfer. Does that affect the billing on that call? Because I tell you, our volunteer ambulance providers generally are underpaid for what they do with primarily volunteer workers. Do you guys get paid? Do they get paid? Do you split it?
Well, that can go either way. So, they could get paid for their portion, we get paid for our portion. We can split it. That's what this whole getting together in three days is to discuss to find what works as a compromise, so.
And if I may, certainly. You know, with the issue of mutual aid, should you get it, or if MedStar were to get it, would you have any issue with mutual aid with your competitor, or in fact, any of the other volunteers? I mean, obviously, public safety is our priority, and, but you have a business to run. And so, mutual aid, you don't think that would be a problem, or would it be a problem?
That would not be an issue. We've been upfront in saying that. We stated that in front of the city council as well. We'd be happy to make mutual aid agreements with anyone in the community that requires one. In our RFP for the city, we stated that we would assume all already existing mutual aids if the other parties so wished as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bender?
I'm curious, I'm clearly not an expert in this field, it's, and I'm just curious if you were sitting in our chair, what kind of criteria you would use to choose between two providers that have been deemed by our medical director to be both qualified? What should we be looking for to make this decision?
In my opinion alone, I think that you should consider first proximity to the entire location of the service area, especially being that you're looking at it in terms of response time compliances. So, you have that one minute to acknowledge a call, then, you know, percentile of time. Other than that, I believe we're both excellent providers, so I don't see there being any reason to get into clinical issues at all. Would be proximity would be my, my personal choice.
Other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
You mentioned basic life support, but the city requires you to run ALS all the time, correct?
Correct.
And will you be providing that same service to District Five then, or will you have some EMTs working?
So, you're asking we'd be willing to do BLS within Zone Five?
I mean, do you, does ALS require two paramedics or just one?
It only requires one, sir.
Oh, okay. So, would you be running just basic life support into that area at all?
We would initially be staffing our ambulances ALS. If the county would like to consider BLS in Zone Five, that's something I would be open to discussion, but at this time, we would be starting with ALS.
So, we would get the advanced service?
You would automatically get advanced service.
Thank you.
So, there is a BLS rate and et cetera, so you can provide BLS with ALS.
I think our requirement is only BLS in the county, and, but obviously ALS is a better product. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mike. We might call you back. Mr. Major, you do want to make any comments? Jay, would you like to make any comments?
We have a presentation to show. I think we're just kind of, kind of bypassed that, because I think Dr. Luther really explained it all. In our presentation that we had for you, we just, we basically showed you our service. We showed you the training center that we have. We kind of explained our longevity in this area. We've explained a lot of that thing, but Dr. Luther said it all when he said that both of our services were exceptional services. So, not going to waste your time with a PowerPoint presentation. But we will, we will show you video at the end of our presentation.
Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry?
No, no problem.
And my name is Jay Major, President and CEO of MedStar Paramedic Ambulance, and next to me is Gary Bauer. He's the Director of Operations for our service. I've been a medic in this field for almost 35 years. Gary's been a flight medic and run many services, and he's got about 25 years' experience himself in running services and so forth. So, we'll kind of, pre-what, start off and say that we've, it's been a long journey for MedStar to get where we're at. You know, we started basically again back in 2000, 2007, we started 911 in the city of Brandon. And from there, two years later, we began 911 in the county. In all of that time, we've been required to have one ambulance to respond to any emergency. And at any given time, we've had five ambulances on the road, and our longest response time has been in the area of 10 minutes. That's on the fourth or fifth ambulance call it been called to. So, we've been required one ambulance, which you've had up to five on emergency calls in the county and the city of Brandon at one time. That shows the dedication that MedStar has to the 911 services in the county and the city of Brandon. We currently have seven ambulances. They're all critical care and, and advanced life support equipped. We have two ventilators, the same types of ventilators that they carry on the flight teams at Sanford and McKennan. We have the, the automatic CPR to do compressions for people. So, basically, in our ambulances, they are equipped to handle about the same things you can handle in an emergency room without x-rays and blood testers. So, having going from there, I think we're down to the point of response times. And I agree with my friends with, with the Texas-based company, we're down to the response times. And MedStar right now, from, from our location in Brandon, which is basically our primary responsibility is the county and the city of Brandon. Now, in the city of Sioux Falls, if response times aren't met, there's a fine attached to that every time there's not a response time met. So, the company in Sioux Falls, primary responsibility has to be that city where response times have to be met, or they're going to be fined money. With us, our primary responsibility is the people in the county, and we've proven that, and the people in, in Brandon. So, here's our plan. Our plan is to have our six ambulances staffed in Brandon, ready for any emergency, any place in the county to back anybody up. We also have a plan to place another ambulance someplace between Renner and Hartford to cover that area, so that the response times can stay where, where they need to be. Actually, they will improve greatly by having an ambulance in that area specifically for the 911 emergencies that come across in that area. You know, there's approximately 500 to 600 calls in that part of the county. And my estimations are 250 or so are on that side of the county. The rest are pretty close to the Brandon station, where that station can cover them. So, us putting an ambulance over there, again, actually is, is not a revenue generator for us, but what that does enhances our service and the 911 services in the county holistically. So, as a lot of those calls can be handled out of Brandon, we all know that some of them, Toowall Lake, isn't acceptable. The second thing that we'll do if we get this contract is we will, we've already been working with Garrettson and some of the other services, but we're going to work with these people, and we're going to shore up our mutual aid agreements, which means not just mutual aid. We're not just looking at mutual aid if we don't have an ambulance available. If there's a call that's closer to Humboldt than we are, there's no reason not to send them if it's a Code Four, Code Three type of calls where they can get there five minutes earlier than we can. Because at the, at the end of the day, this isn't about who gets the revenue stream, although in business, we have to have that to operate. But at the end of the day, if it's my family, my mom, my grandma, my friends that are hurt, I want to see to it they get the quickest and best attention that they can. And that, that's going to be our total goal in this county. We will work, we will work hand in hand with our friends with Paramedics Plus. If we get this, we will sign mutual aid agreements. We'll come into the city of Sioux Falls and help them if they need it, and I'm sure that they would come out in the county and give us a hand if we're busy. So, you know, I think in our line of work, you know, the business side is one aspect, the compassionate human side is another. And as a business owner, I tend to take the human compassionate side a little bit further than I do the business side. And we'll continue to do that in the county if we get this contract. Gary, is there anything you want to add before we ask for questions?
Yes, the, when we currently handle.
Could you speak into the mic, Gary, please?
Needs to use the mic and identify.
I'm Gary Bauer, B A U E R, and I'm the Director of Operations at MedStar. And to touch on, we already have Area Six per contract with the, with the county, and that goes out to Valley Springs and all those. In our presentation, we had all our response times, if that's something that anyone needs to look at. The, the primary thrust here is to put a station on that side. We've already talked with several different organizations already of where to possibly staff one. We currently have four trucks every day on call, and the first one can go out the door within seconds of acknowledging the call. Second ones have to be to the station so many times. Thirds are on backup. But we also have two staff, like Jay's a paramedic, I'm a paramedic. My two supervisors underneath me are EMTs. So, we can throw two more trucks in the blink of an eye if, you know, if, you know, a big disaster or anything like that happens, or we get a surge in the volume. Our current plan is when that station gets called out, we can replace that of Brandon because I have up to six people to go over there. And we can rotate them all through depending on, on where the call is located. With our 24-hour dispatch center handled in there, we can, you know, Metro dispatches us out, we can internally handle which trucks go where. And we can have, we already have protocol set for it is now. If we send a truck out to Valley Springs, for example, I've already got another one coming in, and I've also got most generally, especially during the daylight hours, you know, another two trucks that we can send, fully staffed, fully capable. And, and putting that truck on that side takes care of a lot of the issues over there. And we can also back them up at the Brandon station. You know, that truck gets there first and say there's a couple of vehicles involved, three vehicles, whatever. We can bring mutual aid out of Sioux Falls, we can bring mutual aid out of Humboldt, Hartford, or that area, or send more trucks from our area and still be able to cover Area Six. Because we don't, we don't have that other commitment, and you guys can see the call volume for each of the different areas, and we would be able to absorb that very, very quickly and very easily.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
You do not at this time have a location between Renner and Hartford or Humboldt, whatever you were talking about there?
We don't have a location at this time, no.
Will you have one by May 21st?
That could be pushing it. We will have a location there. We can, we have the contracts right now with the Cycle Club down there. We have, we have a contract with the I-90 Speedway and those things. So, we have trucks in that area quite often, the way it is anyway. But what I guarantee you, I'd have a station there, the 21st, I couldn't guarantee that, but I can guarantee that we will find a station and put a truck there.
My biggest concern is probably that Wild, Wild, Wild Water West area. Right now, what's your response time from Brandon to there if you're going Code Two or One?
Oh, that, that has to be 20-plus minutes to go to Wild Water West from Brandon.
How will it be, you think, if it's Code Three?
It's, it's going to be 20 minutes to get to Wild Water West from Brandon, if not a little longer. And that's, you know, that's where the mutual aid comes in. As I told you, I don't, you know, right now, Split Rock Volunteer Fire Department has Housat Speedway in its territory. But when we have a problem at Housat Speedway, there's an automatic dispatch of Brandon Fire because they know they're closer. And we would, we would do the same thing until we had everything in place to cover that in a timely response. We wouldn't cover that call from Brandon, although we'd, we'd send a truck en route. We would send the closest available truck until we had a truck there. Same differences if our truck wasn't there at all, and it was on another call, but we had one there. We have to have a backup plan for that second and third call to come up in that area. And it's all about planning. It's all about looking at the resources and making sure we get the quickest ambulance there in the quickest time. I enjoyed Gene Bender's question about being able to split it and, and do something with these territories, but as of right now, you can't do that. That's not possible because of the ordinance. I'm looking forward to entertaining, you know, doing redivisions of that territory. As we've talked to Garrettson a little bit about, you know, these, these lines can be renegotiated, and, and time responses can be better according to ordinance, but right now, there is areas for all services that another service could get there a little quicker.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Jay, so on your trucks, do you have a paramedic on, on all of them, or some of them purely EMTs?
Right now, all of our trucks have at least one paramedic, but a lot of our trucks will run with two. So, a minimum of paramedic EMT, but paramedic, paramedic is now the question with our company.
If I may? You know, I really think that the issue of finding a, another location, and it doesn't have to be a garage, you could just be located, you know, at a donut shop someplace on that side of the county. You know, I guess I would, I would really like a guarantee that you'd be able to stage a vehicle over in that area, equipped and ready to roll. That Wild Water West, there's no good way to get there from Brandon, that's the problem. In fact, you know, driving all the way through the city would be miserable the way our traffic is now. And, you know, I think something over there has to happen. And I can, that's.
Okay. Other questions?
Would you like an answer to that question about?
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, one of the things, like, like I alluded to earlier, we haven't that many staff already. We could certainly put a status, you know, that's, that's kind of what the city of Sioux Falls is doing, they're putting trucks where the need is. Given our schedule, we could definitely do that. We could put a truck staged somewhere in that area. Right now, the reason we can't give you definite locations is because we're in talks with several of the different little, the local volunteers through there, possibly using their stations, possibly using their EMTs to help. There's a lot of planning that's still in, in that phase. But as far as taking, like on my schedule today, sending one truck over, I'm sure we could manage that somehow. It wouldn't be much of a burden, because then we would just move the other trucks up.
And one more question with that, Commissioner Barth is, I live in Area Five, and I keep my response unit with me, and my response unit has the life pack in it, it has all the ALS drugs. And, you know, in a lot of these situations, it's not so much how quick you can get them from the house to the hospital, it's how quick you can get ALS to the person. And so, I do live in Area Five myself.
Other questions? Is there anyone from the audience who would like to make any comments from the rural systems, or for metro management, or any of the other interested parties?
I saw Darren out there. I would hope that he would. Is he still there? There he is. Not, not to ask you questions about.
Darren, do you want to identify yourself first, please?
Good morning, Commissioner Darren Ketchum, Metro Communications.
Not to, not to make a decision on which one, but just some questions on, on the dispatching and how this will affect what you've been doing for the last several years. If you had a provider who is based basically in Brandon, or you had a provider that's in Sioux Falls, how will, how will this affect that? I'm concerned primarily with that western part of this county.
Yeah, I think mechanically, you know, not a lot changes. Obviously, there's going to be a longer wait time if you use the example of a unit coming from Brandon to that west side of, of Sioux Falls. You know, what I see is probably more questions from, you know, if that first responder gets on scene, you know, they're providing that immediate support, whether it's a volunteer fire department, whether it's a deputy sheriff, whether it's a highway patrolman. You know, I think that's where, you know, they're going to be on scene for potentially a longer time if you use that example. But as far as dispatching a unit, you know, certainly we don't want to get into the situation where somebody's trying to tell, to pick, well, no, I want this service or that service. That is not somewhere we want to go with this. It needs to be clear, this service is served by this organization, the mutual aid is served by this organization, and we have those things set up today. So, if, you know, if Humboldt's on a call, and, and they don't have another unit available, we automatically dispatch Rural Metro to go assist them, or the same with Del Rapids. Or, uh, same with Del Rapids or Garrettson. We have those mutual aid, uh, programmed into our system today. So I think really the only thing that changes from our perspective is the, the name of the company or the name of the service that we provide. Does it complicate things? Um, you know, if you're trying to execute mutual aid more often, um, because of locations, yes, I think it does. Uh, is it insurmountable? No, I don't think it is. So I think the options are, um, clearly up to you to decide. You know, I wouldn't offer much more, I think, than what Dr. Luther provided, that you have two medically qualified services vying for the contract. And certainly whoever you pick will coordinate with and make sure that, um, we, we get all the maps redone and mutual aid agreements put into the system and that we're able to, to meet the requirements as the county ordinance states.
Thank you, Darren. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I guess I'm asking on the response time out there, when, when, if, if you had an incident, I guess it could be a car accident or, or any other kind of, uh, incident. Will the Hartford, who's got the fire department out there? Hartford?
It depends on where you're at. If you're in the Old Wayne Township area, Sioux Falls Fire Rescue serves that area. Uh, there's another component, I think, of the, the primary service area where Hartford Fire Department is the, um, Fire Department. You know, if you get way out to the western boundary there, I think maybe even Humboldt Fire would come into play at some point, so.
And they'd be dispatched just like they are in Sioux Falls, um, for instance, in that, in that area?
In the county, every medical call that, that comes up with the exception of the city of Brandon, but in the county, uh, we dispatch first responders to every fire, or I'm sorry, every medical call. So we notify the sheriff's office, uh, and we dispatch the volunteer fire department to be that first responder on every medical call, regardless of the priority. If it's a, if it's a lower priority call, um, you know, uh, somebody falls, it's not a life-threatening event, we still notify the fire department. Uh, because even in, uh, communities, you know, Hartford, for example, does not have an ambulance in Hartford. You know, people expect there to still be that, that initial response and for it to be timely. And so Hartford Fire Department provides that, just like Humboldt Fire Department provides it in other communities or in their community and throughout their, uh, fire service area.
So there is someone on site pretty quick, within probably 10 minutes, is that true?
Uh, I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't attach a time to it because there's so many variables that, um, come into play depending on the location, uh, time of day, uh, type of call, um, that really can affect the timeframe that a first responder may be on scene. So I guess I wouldn't be able to attach a time to it at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Barth? A couple of questions. Currently, when you dispatch Rural Metro, it's a little bit different than when you dispatch, say, Humboldt, right? I mean, uh, you don't say to Rural Metro, send truck, uh, you know, 21 to such and such an address, but you say to Humboldt, send your truck because there's only one, right? So do you directly dispatch Rural Metro now or do they dispatch after you call them?
Uh, today, we, we do the latter. We dispatch them as a station and then they send a unit. However, on May 21st, that changes. Um, with the new service provider, the city wrote into their contract that we will dispatch by unit. So, um, within Metro, we'll have the location of all the units. We send the closest unit to the call. We don't call them and ask for a station to dispatch, so we're the primary and only dispatch they have.
And if I may, uh, you heard the reference to the, the fines that the city applies. So occasionally, uh, you might be diverting an ambulance en route away from that broken leg to the heart attack in Sioux Falls. Isn't that, is, is that how it goes?
Uh, could you clarify that for me?
Well, let's say someone's got a broken leg outside of the city limits and the ambulance is en route and you have a, a stroke or a heart attack, and you would divert that ambulance to that if it's in the city of Sioux Falls to avoid a fine or-
Uh, when we dispatch ambulances, we don't look at, um, if somebody's gonna be assessed a fine. We look at the, you know, obviously what time we receive the call and what the priority is. Certainly it is possible that if a higher priority call comes up, that an ambulance could be diverted. Uh, that could happen with any service that we, that we work with today. So if, if you have somebody that has a non-life-threatening, uh, event and a life-threatening event comes up, uh, absolutely, we'll divert that, that ambulance. However, we do not, uh, look at if our actions would cause a fine to be assessed to somebody else. Our job is to make sure that we get the, uh, most efficient response to the people that need it as quick as possible.
And certainly that would, uh, that changes, obviously, with the new contract where the city, uh, where you'll be kind of dispatching them directly and not dispatching them through the administration of the ambulance company.
Do you have that, do you have that capability with both of the applicants as far as dispatching them after May 21st? That requires GPS in the, in the vehicle, I would assume.
Uh, currently, the only ambulance service provider that, on that date, would be Paramedics Plus. That has the, uh, mobile client system that we utilize for our computer aided dispatch. Same computer system that is in a, you know, Sioux Falls Fire has that capability, Minnetonka County Sheriff's Office, uh, Brandon Police Department and Sioux Falls Police Department all have that, the equipment so that we can, um, dispatch closest unit. Uh, and that is part of the city's contract with Paramedics Plus, that they had to have that.
Other questions? Thank you, Darren. Uh, anyone else like to make any comments?
Morning, Lynn.
Sure, it's Lynn Young, you, excuse me, Emergency Management. Um, you know, I think, uh, for all parties involved, uh, because our window is closing here, that certainly for, like I said, the, the amulets, there's still some logistical work that needs to be done on whoever you select. So I would just encourage you today, um, you know, to ask those questions and as quickly as possible proceed down the actual awarding of that. Um, I think Dr. Luther and Darren are correct, both of them are capable, but there are still some logistical things that need to happen, um, for this. And we don't want to see that window close much, or at least I don't, as the County Emergency Management Director, don't want to see that window close from what we have of 30 days now to 21 days to 14 days to, to there because then I think it increases, um, the likelihood that something either, either on the county side or metro side, uh, won't be covered. So I just wanted, uh, to bring that forward.
Thank you, Lynn. Questions for Lynn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment that with the stress of the tragedy in Brandon, a week ago Lynn has worked, uh, super hard and certainly has a personal relationship with all the fire departments in our area. And it's, uh, he's done a great job and, uh, held up well.
Yep, thank you. Other questions or comments? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Great.
Tom Kayfer, uh, ambulance director for Humboldt Ambulance. And, uh, we've talked it over with our members also and, uh, unless you guys feel you're not happy with the system that has been running, uh, we feel out there it'd be a smoother transition to stay where we're at right now and to roll right into, uh, Paramedics Plus from Rural Metro. And, uh, and if, uh, as time goes on, if we're not happy with it, I guess that can be adjusted later on instead of, uh, upsetting the apple cart as it is right now. So, uh, that's our feelings out there. And we serve a lot of the boundary out there on Area 5, on the west edge. So, uh, that's our feelings with our department.
Questions for Tom?
I have one. Would you guys want to change the boundaries when they change or when they potentially could change in a year and a half? Are you happy with your territory?
We're happy with our territory right now, but it's nothing we rule out. Uh, you know, it's definitely worth looking into, but, uh, as of right now with Paramedics Plus coming in, I guess we feel out there it'd be a, a smooth transition to, uh, roll in. Uh, we've, uh, discussed with them and had, had a, a few talks with them, but, uh, they're happy to pick up where Rural Metro left off, so.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Other comments?
I have one question, Lynn. Could, um, and you may not know the answer, but is, are, are the number of ambulance calls population-driven? Is, you know, what, what's a factor in, in how many calls an area has? Is it primarily population?
You know, I think there's a, a lot of factors in it. Um, what, so one of them could be populations, one of them could just be, uh, demographics of the population. An example of that could be, uh, if you have a, I don't, uh, don't take this wrong, Commissioner, but if you have a, a nursing home or a, a group of advanced aged folks together, um, that could-
Why are you directing that call?
Because you asked the question. I told you, don't, uh, so anyways, there are many factors. I mean, it could be, uh, you know, manufacturing facility, even, uh, one of the things you brought up before is Wild Water West. During the summer, we see a large increase of folks going there because it's an entertainment center. So I think there's a lot of, uh, factors you take in, um, you know, to, to try to answer that question about placement and, and those things.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions for anyone? Do we have a motion?
Chairman Bennigan, I would ask another question of Jay Major.
Okay.
Jay, uh, would you-
You'll need to come to the mic.
Would you guarantee a west side location by, or staging area by the date? And, uh, and what about this GPS-type system for vehicles in District 5?
Good questions. Yes, we would guarantee to have an ambulance there and we'd station it there until we had a, a physical, um, you know, the, the differences here in South Dakota is you, you have to have a roof over the top of your ambulances and things because of the weather. And so we will have a station there staffed 24/7, self-sufficient. The second, your second question?
GPS.
We've had it on our vehicles for three years. It's called the Eagle. And basically with our GPS systems and our dispatch center, and I don't know if it can be taken with what they have here or not, but we can tell where they're at, how fast they're going, how fast they stopped, how long they've been someplace. So we can keep absolute control of our vehicles with GPS knowing where they're at and what they're doing at all times. We've been doing that for three years.
Apparently that's not available to the 911, Metro 911 at this point.
Well, and here, here's the differences. And, and I can see the differences. In Sioux Falls, they've got, um, 16,000 911 calls, 15,000 probably this year. They've got four ambulances that are dropping a patient off and then going someplace else. And the difference is, and one of the good reasons they need that in Sioux Falls, is they want that closest ambulance go to the next call because it's probably gonna happen while they're sitting in the emergency room unloading their patient. With us, we have one station. We'll have two. We know where our vehicles are gonna be. So by just, uh, by, um, sending our station, you've done the same thing by sending their ambulances because of our proximity to our locations. We have an average of three minutes in Brandon and six to seven minutes in the county. That's our average response times. We had it on here. And, um, we take all that seriously. Um, and if we could have played this whole thing, you'd have seen all that come, come up on the screen, but I didn't because of Dr. Luther's recommendation. We didn't play that. But, um, you know, we'll do, we'll continue to do the best we can. Will there be hiccups and things? Absolutely there'll be hiccups and things. We're not perfect. But we'll do the best we can as we have, as we've proven ourselves in Area 6 and Brandon and that whole area. We'll prove ourselves in the same areas again. So to answer your question, we will have a vehicle there and we will have a, a, a station there for that vehicle. We just can't give you a timeframe on that.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Now we've had a chance, it's the first time we've had a chance to really interface with either one of these organizations regarding the applications. Uh, we got the, we got the report from Dr. Luther and, and we've had, uh, applications to look at. I'm, I'm just wondering if, if, if now if we could take one more week or if there's any effect of take one more week to digest all that we've done and then make our decision next week. I, I just float that as a question and if, if you want to act today and so on.
Comments?
Well, my comment on that would be that I would appreciate that personally. I recognize the need to make a decision and get, you know, be able to, um, put the transition plan in place. But, I mean, this is an area that I, I feel in order to make, um, the best informed decision, I'd like a little bit of time to kind of process the information we received this morning.
Other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, uh, I have great respect for my colleagues there and I'm not unwilling to wait, but at the same time, just like dispatching an ambulance, time is of the essence when we only have a month here. And, uh, so we definitely have to make a decision pretty quick. Uh, but if it's the will of the board to, uh, ponder for a week, uh, I'll, uh, certainly go along with it.
Is there someone who wants to make a motion?
Gerald, have you got a comment on it?
You know, I'm ready to move ahead, but it's obvious that at least two of you are not. So I can defer it for one week.
I'll make a motion to defer for one week.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to defer the-
Are there any consequences from this? Ken? Uh, I mean, other than it pushes them a little bit tighter on there?
Like I said, Dr., uh, or excuse me, like Lynn just said, there are just some, some coordination issues that we would have to work out with 911. I don't believe that, um, a week delay is going to overly complicate that process. It certainly shortens the timeframe a little bit and will hold some feet to the fire and that, but, uh, I can certainly understand your desire to, to review all the information that you've received today and that, in order to make that decision. So no, I don't think it overly complicates it and that, uh, it'll just, staff will just have to work a little bit harder to make sure it happens. So, thank you, Ken.
I have a question for my colleagues.
We need a second. Do, do we have a second, sir? Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Will we all be here next week?
Uh, no. I think Commissioner Heiburger is gone next week also. And we may have to, and, you know, whether there's a possibility of having what we've, like we've done in the past, some sort of conference in, in case that might be necessary, we may have to do that.
Why are you looking at me when you say that?
I'm just saying, because you've used it before.
Can we ask the two applicants if it, uh, has a, uh, effect on them?
Will we, Ma, will you take them as I leave? No, it'll be fine.
Okay. They've both agreed to one week extension. We have a motion and a second. If there's no other comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for your time and we'll be back on board next week.
I'm moving to the block and I noticed right when you got through, could we go back on the agenda and planning? Is that allowed?
Uh, oh. This is the appeal, it's still coming up on the agenda.
Yeah, are you talking about the appeal process?
Uh, there was, um, Tim G. Hart and I was on that-
That's still coming.
That's still coming.
That's okay. You can speak at that time.
Nope. No, no, no.
Still coming.
We're on item 11. Uh, next on the agenda is a briefing on the proposed amendments to the inmate guidebooks for the county jail and community correction center. Lieutenant Mike Matson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Matson with the Minnetonka County Sheriff's Office Jail Division. Um, we've, uh, Warden Gromer submitted to the commission electronically our, uh, proposed inmate guidebooks for the jail and for the county correction center. Also included in that documentation is a, a summary of the changes that we've done. This has been a, an ongoing project for the last year and a half, two years. Um, our current guidebook that we're working under, uh, is a 2008 version. Uh, there's been a lot of things that have changed in our industry in that time. Um, this guidebook, or I should say these guidebooks, um, really put forth, uh, best practice as far as our industry. And that basically reflects the changes in the book.
Questions for Lieutenant? They've been working on it for two years. I don't think we're gonna tell them how to change. We haven't looked at it for two years, but I agree, it's been a work in progress for a long time.
Um, Warden Gromer was not able to be here today. He, he did express that if you did have questions, you could contact him. Um, you can always contact myself as well.
Okay.
And then we'll be here next week.
Good. Thank you.
Item number 12 is to consider an appeal of the decision by the county planning commission to approve conditional use permit 15-17 to expand the mini storage units on the property legally described as track 3A Francis Track South 1/2, Southwest 1/4, Section 7, T-10 Mr. Hookman?
Hello. Kevin Hookman, County Planning and Zoning Department. This item is a conditional use permit number 1517. It's for mini storages, you've just heard. It has been appealed by the, one of the neighbors. To go over the property a little bit, it's located at the Crooks Renner exit just to the northeast. It has recently been rezoned earlier this year to include the entire property to be commercial instead of just a portion of the property as commercially developable. The site currently has a handful of storage buildings on it that was approved by a prior conditional use permit. And they have not finished out all of that site plan yet, but they, the petitioner would like to expand the project into this newly rezoned portion on the north side of the property. The site is surrounded by a four-foot barbed wire fence and it does have a gate to prevent access from anybody. It's coded, so to keep intruders out. The site, let's see, all the area around it is developed already for as far as eligibility. There's only one eligibility left on this court, on this section of land. And so the future development of this land is going to be, isn't going to be affected too harshly by the advancement of this. I'll go over some of these pictures here. So this is the proposed site plan. The three buildings that are highlighted a little bit darker on the south side have already been constructed. He does have approximately one building that would be left on his original conditional use permit that he can build based on that. This would extend the buildings further north and he also added trees further north that were down south a little bit further, that real trees on the top of the landscaping to help screen development out. This is the property to the north and the developable area. And you can see kind of the hill for the driveway sloping down for the development of that portion of the property. There's another view of that. In the background there, you can see the, the kind of wetland that kind of drops down way to the next property. And there's the already developed buildings. This is the property line that will have trees screening the north side there. You can kind of see that the current residence is not very well sheltered from the development. There isn't really any sort of screen and it's fairly close. The property is below the road because of the interstate overchange. So from the interstate overchange here, it's not very noticeable per se as a tall building or anything like that. The, the planning commission on March 23rd, the planning commission approved this project unanimously. Nobody was opposed to it. A short time after, we received an appeal for hearing it today, so.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, did you discuss bushes or evergreens as opposed to deciduous? I see only an inch and a half caliper, so they're pretty small trees.
Yes. In the conditions, it is listed that one of the two rows of these trees that are shown in this site plan has to be a coniferous or an evergreen variety of tree. So you can stagger them, every other one deciduous and coniferous, so that way you can have a different look to it, but at least one of them.
But they have the option of whichever one they want to do?
Yep, just as long as one of them is.
As far as the, as far as the petitioner is concerned, I would think the north would be where you'd want to specify the, the furtries.
Specify what type?
Well, what, I'm sorry, maybe I missed what you said there. What, in the conditions?
Condition, let's see if I can find it.
It's condition number seven. All trees shall be kept in a live state. Any dead tree shall be replaced within one growing season.
Okay, but we're not talking about, other than the inch and a half of size or anything?
No, I don't have a size placed on there. Condition number eight, it says at least one of the staggered rows of trees on the north side of the property shall be planted with an evergreen coniferous species.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin? Is the petitioner here?
I am.
She's the opponent.
The petitioner.
Oh, you're the, the owner. If we make some comments first, please. If you would like, you don't need to.
Good morning Commissioners, Tim T. Hart, Renner Storage, 25788, 472nd Avenue. I didn't have a whole lot of comments except the row that Kevin is referring to. On the original site plan, there was just one row of trees on the north. Kevin requested an additional row to be placed up there and staggered with evergreens. So that is in on the site plan now to help screen out the property. And if you had any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions? Commissioner Barth?
You know, your original proposal, we required you to hard surface the area and that's not been done. But with this additional conditional use permit, that hard surface is required to be installed once all of them are constructed or by April 31st of 2016. So you are planning on doing that. I know you were concerned about the cost of doing it for the whole development, but, and you've not done it for the first part yet.
No, we have not. We, we didn't plan on doing it until we.
Filled it up.
Yeah. The original site plan wanted it complete when we were 80% of completed construction. So we have not done it yet.
Just wanted to point that out, Mr. Chair.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Benega?
I have a question. It's my understanding that the request is that you move the units back another 500 feet from the north boundary, and I'm just curious how that affects, how that would affect your, your plan that you have for setting these units out.
We wouldn't be able to do any additional units at 500 feet, I believe.
Kevin, are we already within that 500 feet? Yeah. The, the current site plan, how it's been developed is already.
Kevin, talk into the mic, please.
The current site plan is already within that 500-foot distance. The distance is between about the house to the property line, I think last time I checked is about 150 feet. So it's a pretty short distance currently. And yeah, they're already developable within that distance, so.
Other questions? Have any other comments, Tim?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience in favor that would like to speak? If you would like to address the commission as an opponent, you certainly can.
Commissioner? And thank you for allowing me to speak. I.
We need your name.
I'm Annette Crinkie, and I'm part of the trust that has the ownership of the picture of the family home that was up there. I'm on behalf of my two brothers that I speak. The 500 that we would like to request is, we understand it's 500 as it is now, if it could be 1,000, because as the picture up there, it's a pretty narrow angle there. And I appreciate the fact of the trees because the lights are very, very excellent security lights and it just bombs that residential area at night with all those lights. And we intend to put up a pretty good shelter there, too. So that would be the first request, is that we go 1,000 feet from the fence line to the south. The second request is, Tim and I have visited and he has shown some interest that they'd like to build a business. We would be very opposed to this because it's right next to a residential area.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Barth?
While you have had a residence there, and I know that in the past, there was a tree farm where the storage facility is at now, right?
Correct.
And your family's been there for 40 some years at least, right?
We've, I brought my uncle down here in 1993. He's a farmer and I bought that land for him.
The problem is, though, that it's right on the intersection of a county highway and an exit to an interstate highway. This whole area is very likely to develop with, you know, all kinds of, you know, things like truck stops and McDonald's and, you know, factories and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, it's, it's going to be very difficult to restrain that and keep it as a pastoral rural setting. And, you know, that's certainly been the case since the interstate highway was built when they had an exit there. And so it's, I just would point that out, that it's hard to expect a, an area as prime as this to remain as it always was. It's, it's not a museum. And so change does happen and certainly your property will become more valuable as the need for commercial enterprises as they, as they want to buy it from you. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out.
Well, we'd like to keep it residential, but because of the area that it's in, it's, there's all housing in, it's there. Thank you.
Other questions for?
I have a question for Kevin. The shoebox lighting is supposed to direct the light down.
Yes.
Do you know approximately how high these lights are that she's complaining about?
I believe the buildings are about 14 or 15 feet tall and they're lined right at the very top of that, that building, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they are supposed to have the shoebox lighting to, to keep the light on the property.
There's a minimum amount of spillage then?
Other questions? Anyone else from the audience like to oppose the permit? No? Is there a motion?
Well, I guess I'd like to ask Tim another question if, if he has any. Tim, the question is, do you have any plans on trying to make it easier for your neighbor
I don't have any intention of putting a business on this property. Like she stated, it's just going to be storage units like I'm requesting to do. I guess I didn't quite understand her request to go 1,000 feet now instead of 500. I believe that would, from the north property line, 1,000 feet would be past 258th, which would pretty much, on the whole property, you wouldn't be able to do anything on.
And you're not going to use your eligibility, right?
No, sir. That was removed when it was rezoned commercial.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have met with Kevin recently about the lighting and I, as far as spillage to the north, we don't believe there is any spillage to the north. There was some to the west and we have changed, or in the process of changing, four of those lights to a shoebox downer directing light.
Okay.
I'm willing to work with whatever he has asked for thus far.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve?
To uphold the planning commission decision.
Right, with the conditions.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the planning decision with, I think there's, what, nine? Nine conditions, I gotta find, is that right?
There's nine of them, yes.
Yep, nine of them. Anybody else have any comments? We have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Robert? We're going to item number 13. Consider a bid award for Minnehaw County Project 155-OL 2015 for asphalt overlay on 10 miles of Minnehaw County Highway 155 to County Highway 122. Jason?
Good morning Commissioners. Jason Reeves, Engineering Supervisor with the Highway Department. Last Wednesday, we opened bids for our annual contracted overlay project. This is 10 miles in the northwest part of the county. We had good competitive bids with asphalt surfacing company being the low bidder at Like I said, very competitive bids. My last cost estimate was about 1.45 million, so we're just under that. Everything looked good on the bids and we are recommending award and looking for your approval.
Questions for Jason? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract for $1,374,936.20 to asphalt surfacing. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 14 is to consider a motion to authorize the sale of two vote tabulation machines. The serial numbers are listed for $100 each to Marshall County. Mr. Litz?
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. On 8/19/2014, the Auditor's Office finalized a transaction that involved purchasing two DS-850 voter tabulation machines from ESNS for the general election. Part of that deal involved ESNS taking two of the four 650 tabulation machines, the old ones on trade. There were declared surplus by the commission, and that's under South Dakota, or SDCL 6-13, and that facilitated the deal. Originally, we were told that the 650s and 850s were compatible and could be used as a backup. It was not explained that this would only be after considerable expense and cost of bolt is undertaken. Since that does not seem to be practical, and the Auditor's Office plans to ask for the purchase of another DS-850 this fall, we would like to sell the old 650s to Marshall County, South Dakota. They certainly could use them to replace our old DS-200s that failed during the last election. The 650s were purchased with HAVA funds and any proceeds for the machines will have to be returned to the state's HAVA fund and not into Minnehaw County's general fund. The Secretary of State is recommending a nominal amount be charged for the machines. Marshall County has suggested the amount of $100 paid to satisfy that requirement. I am therefore asking the commission make the motion for items with serial numbers 4205-7325 and 4205-7328, selling them to Marshall County, South Dakota for $200 total. They do not have to be declared surplus for a government-to-government sale such as this, and that's under SDCL 6-5-5. The amount, the amount of money that the sale generated is to be placed back in the state HAVA fund. Both machines are described as DS-650 ballot tabulation machines.
Thank you, Mr. Litz. Any questions for Bob?
I'd make a motion to authorize that sale.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the sale to Marshall County for $200. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion unanimously passes, 4-0.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your patience. Item 15. We have the Sheriff's Department submitting an application to the state criminal alien assistance program for grant funds. Kristen?
Good morning, Kristen Trana with the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office. I'm requesting authorization to, for SCAP funds. It's a program that we've participated in for many years through the jail. It requires us to report numbers of those who have come into our country from other countries and they're able to use that information and then it's, it's just to help subsidize some of the expenses that come from crimes committed by those people. We have been able to use the funds in the past for equipment, overtime, and other things. Most recently, we were able to purchase some tasers as part of that taser program or taser implementation that we've done through the Sheriff's Office. The funds do need to be used for correctional purposes only. We can't use them for other purposes, but we definitely are able to put them to good use in the jail.
Questions? Commissioner Barth?
So are these people being held on local criminal charges?
Correct.
And, and so they're not federal prisoners, they're our prisoners?
They are our prisoners.
And just coincidentally, in violation of federal law, as a coincidence? I mean...
No, it would have, they're, they're not being held on federal charges at all.
Right.
It's just local charges, it's that they are, but they are not... We submit data, and it was, it's not our responsibility to know whether they are naturalized citizens, or if they're legal residents, or, or, or what their status is. But the information that we provide, then the SCAP program is able to determine from that what level of funding we, we do. So it's gonna be those that were not necessarily, not born in the United States. Those are the ones that they would evaluate from.
And we don't get any rent from the feds when we're holding them. It's, they're our prisoners.
They're our prisoners. They're Minnehaha County inmates, yes.
Yep. Sorry. Other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the application. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience. Any commission liaison assignment reports? I would just say that this morning before the meeting for breakfast, we, I met with the Public Defender's Office, and we'll update you shortly on some of those suggestions and with an annual report. It's all that we discussed. Any new business? Any old business? Robert?
Just briefly, under new business, Robert Wilson with the County Commission Office. I attended a briefing by the South Dakota Chamber of Commerce this morning on more or less their legislative wrap-up, and I would just have a few comments for you on, on that. And obviously, if you have any questions for me, please feel free. A good portion of their briefing dealt with Senate Bill 1, the, the funding package for local and local government roads and bridges. And so that was a big, big part of the discussion. I, I thought the report was presented by David Owen, David Owen of the State Chamber. And I thought a couple of his points right off the bat were, were fairly interesting, that the, the number of bills that were introduced this year was a relatively low number for a past year. I didn't write down the exact number, but I believe it was somewhere in the 430 range, between 400 and 500, where oftentimes that, that can be up in the 600 or 700 range. So it was significantly fewer bills. About 60% of them passed this year, where, where normally that percentage is, is closer to about half and half. So fewer bills, more of them passed through the, the session overall. Related to Senate, Senate Bill 1, Mr. Owen said, in spite of all of the changes and additional revenue streams and taxes associated with that, number one question across the board, across the state, has been about the speed limit. So that is...
Is what?
Speed limit. So that, that is what, what people are paying attention to at this point. His comment was that would, would that discussion be different if we were sitting here talking about $4.50 a gallon gas right now? And undoubtedly, it would, but with economics of, of fuel at this point and, and the, the change in, in the speed limit, obviously, the, the thing that is most immediate to a lot of drivers is the, that ability to, to go a little faster on the, on the interstates. Talked about the overall funding number of the bill being at $85.8 million a year, and I know our Highway Department gave you some revenue estimates early on, and again, that was, I think, in the, in a matter of hours following the, the final passage of the bill. This was the, the final bill passed prior to the general bill at the end of session. So they were, they were working right up till the end on that. One, another point that I found very interesting is that typically, bills go into, go into effect on the beginning of the fiscal year, the 1st of July. Because this was a revenue bill, they needed 2/3. With that 2/3 majority, they also put the emergency clause on it, meaning that it went into effect 1st of April. And the difference in going into effect 1st of April versus 1st of July was estimated at more than $20 million, 20.7 million just by the, introducing the language a couple of months early. The, another figure that I, I had not heard previously is there was a, an element of the bill that gave counties of different valuation the ability to, an additional levy authority. And if every county took full advantage of what they are authorized in the bill, that would total about $88 million a year. There was, his assessment was, and I would, I think most of us would probably agree to it, that the, the chance that every county will go to the absolute max of what they're, what they're authorized may be, may be fairly, fairly small, but that is, that would be the ability there, is 88.5. Again, that was the main topic, covered a number of other items. School funding, just was not only the, the dynamics of what happened just this year, but there was a, a question of did anybody see a similar large increase as what we saw in highway funding this year for, for school funding in the, in the future? And his assessment was probably fairly unlikely, very unlikely of that. Touched on the switch in the, the management structure of the tech schools, and then a, a number of other, I would say more routine bills that came up on the, on the business end of, into things that the, the State Chamber focused on. So I'd answer any other questions, but that was the, those were the main points of the discussion this morning.
Other questions for Robert? One, Mr. Kelly?
Robert, on an emergency clause, I thought there were, and maybe I'm wrong, I thought there was some criteria that had to be met to make something eligible for emergency. Do you remember that or not? I'm just curious if there are, what they use.
I, I know there's...
I think it was to get the speed limit in, frankly, but...
I, I know it requires a, an additional vote, but if there's a, I can check on that and get back to you, but if there's an additional requirement on criteria for an emergency clause, I will have to check that and get back to you.
Okay, I appreciate your input.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you, Robert. Mr. Lee, do you have any comments in addition to that?
I have nothing to correct.
Thank you. Any old business? Just remind each of you that Friday at 9 o'clock, we have the last of the Board of Equalization hearings here in the room, so please attend. Kyle's done a great job of organizing those. And the last thing is an executive session for legal and personnel needs. Can I have a motion for legal and personnel?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion unanimously passes 4-0.